We have a roll call, please.
Shelley.
Yes.
Mallor. Walling.
Yes.
Shaw. Klein.
Yes.
There is a forum. Forum. So can I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So be it.
Second. Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Klein.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Shelley.
Yes.
Okay, only item on the agenda is new business discussion of the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget, so I'll turn it over to Suzie or Sven or whoever wants to start.
Can I have a motion open discussion?
Okay.
Please.
I'm going to open the discussions.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Roll call.
Shelley.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Okay. Onward.
First, I wanted to talk about the levy rate and what that was going to be this year. Um. The rollback for the current year is forty six point three four percent. So for next year, the assessment limitation order is going up to be forty seven point four three percent. So on a house that's valued at a hundred thousand dollars, it would be valued at forty six thousand three hundred and forty two dollars this year, next year be forty seven thousand. Um, the taxable valuation for the city increased about five point three million from twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six. And this is the third year for that combined general fund levy. Um, so the amount of, and that, and the, the amount of the combined general fund levy is dependent on the growth you have from year to year. And the amount of growth in from our taxable valuation was two point seven nine percent. So since it was over two point seven five, um, but less than four, we had to re- um, decrease our. Maybe by one percent. So lowers it to eight point two five five next year. Um, if that wasn't in fact, we would have about forty eight thousand more in the general fund. Um, we are still able, we, so with that combined general fund levy, we cannot, no, we can no longer levy for, um, emergency levy or the, um, rec centers, special thirteen and a half cent levy. Um, but we still can levy for our property and casualty insurance. Um, we estimate about three hundred and nine thousand for the premiums for next year, and that's about a dollar sixty levy rate. Um, that increased about thirty thousand from the current year. Um, and then with our benefit fund, the levy for the FICA diverse police retirement insurance, um, that levy this current year is one point three million and it's one point three six million and then one point three nine million this next year. So, but with the increase in our valuation and the smaller increase in the benefit fund, it actually caused our benefit fund levy to decrease from seven dollars and eighteen cents to seven dollars and eleven cents. And then putting in the debt service payments, um, that brings our levy rate to seventeen point nine two five eight three per thousand valuation, and that's a decrease of thirty nine cents per thousand valuation from the current year. Um, other things that affect the levy rate, um, for current, I think these things are, um, changes to state regulation that's continuing on commercial and industrial properties. The first hundred fifty thousand is taxed, is, is taxed at the residential rollback and then anything over that is taxed at the ninety percent, um, commercial rollback. So right now the state does reverse the, that rollback to the cities, but that will stop in twenty twenty nine. Um, and then the business property tax credit, um, that used to be a credit on, on your tax bill, but now it's actually, um, like a rollback on the, on the commercial industrial properties. So this amount, um, we will receive a hundred and forty three thousand to reimburse the city for those tax credits. But they only appropriated a hundred and twenty five million, so in twenty twenty nine, we will lose that as well. So that's about two hundred thousand you're probably losing twenty twenty nine from the backfill. Uh, multi-residential property, and that's for unit, properties with units over, over three units, um. The rollback on multi-residential property is the same as residential property, so that's rollback to forty seven point four three. If you remember, like, several years ago, multi-residential property like apartment complexes used to be considered, um, commercial properties, not residential. Um, and then also in twenty twenty six, the homestead credit and exemption increases to sixty five hundred for seniors. And that, and before that was a tax credit, so now this is, we're probably, we won't receive any rollback for that, um. Everyone should have gotten a notice in the mail from the county on their property taxes. I know I did have one question from someone. He asked if, uh, he didn't see the city listed on it, but I think it was a property that was like outside of city limits. So if you have two properties and one is in city limits and one is not in city limits, the city one is only going to show up on the one that's inside city limits, which shows zero other places. Um, next, our next things we're, we're going to be doing for the budget, um, we'll hold our public hearing on the property tax rate at five thirty on April seventh, and then we'll go ahead and set the public hearing, um, the, on the adoption and budget on April seventh, and then hold the public hearing on the twentieth first. The next thing I wanted to talk about was, I wanted to go into it, um, a little further on the combined general fund levy.
Question on rollback. So the rollback forty seven percent means they're going to roll, take forty seven percent off of.
It goes back to forty seven percent.
To that percent.
Yeah.
Okay. It doesn't roll to fifty two.
No, it rolls it back to that forty. Well, this year it's forty six point three four, next year it'll be forty seven point four three.
For a hundred thousand, then you pay forty three percent.
Yeah. Um, so the next slide is the combined general fund levy, it's comparison. Um, so it shows our, the top shows our valuation with gas and electric, um, from twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. Our valuation increased, um, by three point eight percent from twenty four to twenty five, and then two point seven nine percent from twenty five to twenty six. So the combined general fund levy started out at eight point five oh five and then has decreased two percent last year and then one percent to twenty six. This is important just to show the gap in the revenue received. So this current year, our revenue gap with that combined general fund levy is thirty one thousand and next year it'll be forty eight thousand. That we won't receive. And then the next slide I want to talk about was, and if I'm going to ask, and I talked about, just let me know.
Good.
The benefit breakdown by department, I want to guess that. Um, health insurance. We had really good news about health insurance, there's a zero percent increase for health insurance, um. Probably, we looked at some other options, but we will, um, we stay with Walmart and that will be, that'll be put in front of council like next month for approval. And then for dental and vision, um, we anticipated a five percent increase for both and also in life insurance. And then work comp. Um, that's based on population and the rates, but that, our mod factor is down to eighty nine percent, so that really helped our, our premium. And then with that mod factor, we received the credit again for like the loss. So having, having that mod factor go down really helps us save a lot of money on our work comp, which therefore decreases the levy rate.
And the mod is because of safety.
Because of safety, a hundred percent. All the things that we've done, all the things that Josh has done and city staff. And then we can move on to local option sales tax. We estimate three million dollars to be received from local option sales tax revenue. Oh, at the top, we transfer twenty percent to the maintenance fund, and that is for building and maintenance, um, of city buildings. That's six hundred thousand would go off the top to the local option maintenance fund. Um, and then the items in yellow are loan payments and bond payments that will come out of local option sales tax, so I'll transfer those to debt service. And then the items in blue, those are transferred to funds to fund, um, programs like community economic development, marketing, um, preparing next strategic plan, cleanup costs. And then the items in pink or peach are transfers to funds that operate city buildings. Um, so we transfer about twenty five thousand to the Carnegie Fund to eliminate that deficit, about ten thousand to Towne Craft, about two hundred and fifty six thousand to Hotel Tiki Fund. Um, Will Post is included in that, and about twelve thousand we anticipate for American Legion building, but they will, American Legion building will, um, start to make some revenue rentals and everything. So then we also will have to close out some projects with our, um, grant matching funds. We'll have to click, close out the Iowa Street Whatlands project, Frog Creek Restoration and Campground. Purchase the bridge replacement, um, downtown revital, the current downtown revitalization, and then the Bateman Street project along with, um, a terminal project at the airport and the last year's Willis Avenue improvement. So though, we will have to look at closing those kinds out, so we will have to look at what we want to do this current year, and if you want to spread that over a couple of years, but we just had a lot of projects that all have come to at once. I don't know if this is a time spent wants to discuss like the capitals.
Sure. Uh, which? Which of the spreadsheets are we going to start with?
First, when I believe is the one without not defined by funds.
So with ClearGov, um, I did two, um, kind of two exports or two different kinds showing all the same projects. Um, one, which this one is, is by department, uh, and projects by department. And then the other one is by funding source. So that kind of helps. You know, you'll see some large numbers, but that's a lot of grant funds with, um, like the airport project, downtown projects, uh, things like that. So this, this phase or this spreadsheet is kind of the ask from every department. Um, and then I think in the next week, uh, we'll be meeting with departments to kind of refine this and, um, kind of come up with more solidified plan if we need to shift some things to different years or, uh, things like that. Um, to be able to balance out to that, well, to balance out to both of those uh, levels of what is left in local option and local option maintenance. Um, so that's, that's kind of the next phase of the capitals. Um, like I said, we'll be going through those again with departments and having discussions. I think s- some of them have some opportunities for, uh, like shifting uh, equipment around between departments and things like that. So there's some of that, but then also uh, either cutting some expenditures or shifting it into, shifting expenditures into different years as well. So, um, some refinement, but this is kind of the overview of all of the requests. And then the other document is the requests by funding source. So, we'll go through that and then, um, something we're going to kind of a more some probably this year, but really over the next year, really building out uh, more in that future column, uh, and a combination of long-term plans from like the comp plan, the Perry next strategic plan. Uh, and then getting into kind of strategic planning work session with city council and departments on putting together, uh, kind of some longer range, larger project type goals and projects uh, based around our planning and priorities of council and departments. So that's kind of a next part of building this out into more detail and then, uh, that will really help Suzie and I uh, do some longer range financial modeling and financial planning. So, I don't know.
Safe to say that over the next five years, our funding from state sources is going to decrease others dramatically?
Uh, as far as like grants and things like that?
Grants and, you know, we're going to lose any backfill that we had.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so like the business property tax credit in that, uh, budget information summary, I think from a meeting or two ago, talks about the business property tax credit and that phases out. Um, so those are some significant dollars. Um, yeah, so there's some of that, we're still um, watching property tax legislation very closely, um, and
I can't stop spending now.
Yeah, so that will be in the, in a, in its current version, there's some pros and obviously some cons as far as, uh, the stability and sustainability of our budget. Um, the big positive change in this update to the legislation is that, um, like, I think we've talked about before, but, um, the House File seven eighteen that was passed in twenty twenty three, um, that previous spreadsheet that shows our cap, that is, that includes all growth, total growth. So like new construction is lumped in with um, just general, uh, increases in property values. The new legislation, um, separates kind of that organic growth of property values from new value. So, you know, with some of the economic development things we have going, um, it's under current legislation, there's really not a large incentive financially for new growth, uh, especially with Perry where, you know, our total valuation is around a hundred ninety five million, ninety eight, somewhere in there, just under two hundred million. Um, so that's where a new Casey's, a new Quick Star, something that really is not a lot of value. Um, but as a percentage kicks us into that, you know, by point zero four percent, uh, reduces our ability to fund our operations by a full percentage. So, um, that's a big thing for local governments is like putting back that incentive for basically allowing new growth and being able to, uh, you know, use that new growth across the board to help all of our, uh, levy rates and funds and things like that. So, um, that will be helpful, but still has growth limitations and caps and, um, of course, there's still a lot of time, hopefully with that legislation moving through to uh, its final version to really get a full understanding. Um, League of Cities has been working on, I, I have not seen it yet unless it's stuck in my email.
Come up to.
Um, League of Cities has been working on, uh, like a modeling tool so that we could plug in Perry's information, kind of see what that effect could be long-term, uh, under current or under the legislation that's proposed. So, um, always, I think the last, um, uh, spreadsheet from the League of Cities was like thirty pages long of all the bills they're tracking and keeping tabs on. So, um, and even in that, there's some very positive things for cities and some that would be difficult to manage or, uh, difficult to blend with our operations. So, um, keep, just keep an eye on the legislative link every Friday. Um, it's a great encouragement on every Friday afternoon, uh, before a nice weekend to read through everything that's going on. So, um, but and then the American Planning Association Iowa Chapter uh, also has a nice kind of boiled down version of bills that are really specific to planning and development, uh, things. So, uh, kind of between those, we're trying to keep tabs on uh, kind of what's going on that could affect us. So.
I guess my question then leads into, are we going to have to fund operations out of our capital budget? Balance our budget going forward?
Um, you know, as far as our general fund.
Without cutting services to manage.
I mean. It's a double, yeah.
Barely bare bones.
Yeah, uh, it's a double-edged sword, uh, you know, obviously taking funds from capitals to help fund, uh, some of our other, you know, operations and, uh, like already administration. Our wages are split, uh, between some general fund and some utilities. Um, but, you know, generally, again, depending on the legislation, depending on growth, uh, getting some momentum back in housing and things going on in town, uh, could greatly help alleviate some of that, but, um, it's really comes down to kind of the exercise we went through this year of we have a shortfall. There's a gap, um, so are there opportunities to tighten our belts? And, you know, most of those do have, um, operational impacts and impacts to services we provide, uh, which, you know, I know myself, uh, I, every elected official and especially our staff really takes a lot of pride in the services they provide. Um, the, the quality of service on the, uh, budget we have. So, uh, kind of when we get into that, uh, you know, adjustment conversation, we can get a little bit more into, you know, for this year, what departments, department heads, uh, came together as a group and, uh, were able to come up with, uh, and kind of a a, uh, a combination of, uh, revenue increases, opportunities and, uh, cuts to expenditures. Um, so some of those cuts do uh, affect services, um, to varying extents, nothing like, uh, I'd say like horribly drastic, but, uh, you know, every cut is
It's felt by somebody.
It's felt by somebody. And, uh, so we'll, we'll get into that a little bit, but, uh, you know, really, you know, I think big picture, long-term, uh, sustainability of not just Perry, but communities, uh, like city governments, schools, counties, uh, hospitals, things like that. Um, I think overall, we're going to kind of have to reimagine how we operate and how we do things and probably look at ways to collaborate more um, on tighter and tighter budgets. So, um, I know, it's difficult, but hopefully, um, we can continue to provide the level of service that, um, we want to and in a long-term fashion. So, um, yeah. Other, does that answer your question?
Partially.
Uh, was, which part did not get?
Well, I was going to say, if we've got a hundred and forty eight thousand dollar shortfall next year and we're already pinching to get eighty thousand this year.
Yeah.
Where is that coming from?
That's.
We start cutting pens.
That phases out through twenty nine, right?
Yeah.
So that's, you know.
So it's, it's only.
It's, you know, fifty thousand a year maybe, but that's where it all comes down to, um, you know, how much value do we gain and what are we able to, um, collect to provide those services? And then, um, kind of what, what's left in the red or the black to, uh, come up with, but, um.
What I don't want to see us have happen is not have any buffer that we're pushing right up to the limit every year, because we've been there before.
Well.
And we don't want to go there again.
Yeah.
Yeah, then, uh, setting up some, like a reserve policy.
Yeah.
You know, we, we've never really had an official policy, what our reserve should be on like general fund, sewer fund, you know, sewer fund. Me, it can be based on like your loan that, you know, that is specified in there, but I, I think that's really important for us to have.
I do too. Absolutely do, because we do not want to be operating in red or up and again, up against the wall.
All we're, we're, yeah, and that's, you know, especially.
I see us kind of heading in that direction.
Especially, yeah.
And the amount of spending that we've done on, on big projects, I see that coming.
Yep.
And that scares the hell out of me.
Yeah, the, the general fund is, uh, I would say the most at risk or the most, uh, tedious that truly, um, really gets into most of our departments and their operations. Um, you know, projects kind of ebb and flow and, you know, some of the, the projects that we have right now, um, you know, kind of bottlenecked to an extent, um, which is a little bit of a symptom of, you know, the funding rush in availability of, uh, grants, COVID relief related things, um, different projects and the relation between different projects, things like that. Um, you know, for an example, like Frog Creek, we did bid the year prior and it came in much higher than we wanted. So we did reject those bids and then rebid it. So that's one that kind of, you know, bottlenecked us up, um. And kind of once we get through, you know, the closeouts that we have, the next large project is the downtown project. Um, and then I think that's where it really comes into, um, that strategic planning, longer range of what projects do we want to focus on and uh, also correlating that to what funding opportunities are out there for different project types, um, and helping us leverage, leverage other funds the best we can. So. Leverage, leverage other funds the best we can, so. But, and I think in general, the, no pun intended, in general, the general fund. Uh, is the most tedious and most stressful um to. Uh, get through when it's kind of set as far as the property tax dollars collected and then. The other options are all uh more in the fees for services and. Other revenue types and things like that, so. Which we'll get into a little bit more when we talk through the adjustments that are proposed, so.
Are you gonna go through the capitals or just leave that up for?
I would say probably not line for line, but um. Have these, you have these documents, I encourage you to look through all the requests, um, and then. You have feedback or questions, by all means, ask myself or the department head about. A specific thing, um, but that's kind of, the next step is getting into the capitals and. Figuring those out as far as uh needs and priorities and uh. What's, what with each department, so.
So if I read this correctly, we're asking, the ask is for about twenty-eight million dollars in capitals?
Uh, so that would be the. So that line is the total of the next five years.
Right.
And then that's also including all funding sources, so that's where if you go to the funding source. Document, that's where it's more laid out by the funding type.
Sure.
And like kind of the full picture of what funds are. Expected to come from where and then um kind of the totals each year, so. That's one of the things like. With implementing ClearGov over the last couple of years is really honing in on this. Five-year picture and building out, you know, regular replacements, I know. Conversations with the department heads on really. Painting a very clear picture of how often we are wanting to replace uh police vehicles. Parks and rec equipment, uh, public works equipment, things like that, so that. We can have a little bit longer picture of what's coming up and which is. A huge improvement from. Three or four years ago when it was just a very year by year look at capital requests versus, you know. A pretty well-defined first couple of years and then looking out. Into FY twenty-nine, FY thirty, and then the future is kind of those longer term projects that. Require more time for planning and funding and things like that.
Well, as I see it, and I studied this for a little while this afternoon.
Good.
We've already committed from our local option sales tax, just on our payments to. And I haven't run the map, I'm sure CP has it at the top of her head. We've already committed. One point three million. Almost one point four million.
Yes.
And then we've funded thus far from various sources. Where's, where's that? One point seven, almost one point eight.
The, the requests.
Yeah, in request, one point eight. Out of three million. Well, I'm looking at the local option sales tax on the project source. And also.
The funding source.
Yeah, the funding source. I'm seeing one point seven eight eight and change. And um. The fund, if we're projecting three million. The remaining local option sales tax for capital expenditure is only one point three seven three.
Yeah, so.
That doesn't take into account having to close out projects, so finish with them as well, because like. Iowa Street Downtown Project, all those have to be closed.
Okay.
So those numbers on the bottom, the estimated capital projects, those are, those are closeouts that we need. The ones with numbers in them are actuals and then there's some with um that are like just a gray bar. That's unknown, I don't, I wouldn't know that until the project's completely closed down.
So you're saying that we're balanced?
Well, we'll each can close those out.
Yeah.
But we'll have to decide how much.
Yeah, so there's the one point. Three, seven of the general local option sales tax. And then the two hundred and twenty-eight thousand of um. The local option maintenance, so those two together are. Kind of intermingled in that local option sales tax total on the funding.
Okay.
Sources.
Okay.
Um, so that's where, you know, some of these will be split between those two and then. Also for closeouts, um, we're kind of. As part of this, we'll be looking at our fund balances and then kind of the cash flows of some of our other revenues. As to how we want to close out some projects, so like the Iowa Street Wetland and the Frog Creek Restoration. You know, that could be a combination of things, but we do have a balance in the stormwater fund. And then. There's, you know, a few others like that downtown revitalization is one that we've been. Uh, speaking with PFM about of kind of modeling what a loan would look like. And. Possibly a one or the other combination of. General obligation or debt, debt service levy and our sewer funds. And then also sewer uh. Sewer fund balance as well, and especially being a longer term project over a couple of. Budget years, probably FY twenty-six and into FY twenty-seven. And with that one, one of the things that we'll be looking at is doing a bridge loan for. Like maybe two million dollars or something, um, that will help us cash flow the project is. Pay requests come in. And we pay those out and then have to ask for reimbursement from. A variety of funding uh sources, um, so that will help with our cash flow. On that project specifically, and then that bridge loan is convertible to a more permanent financing, depending on kind of what's left. Yeah, much, much like a construction loan.
We'll have to, after the sewer project is completed, um. The bond funds, like the twenty-eight million, that, that's burst out, it's like, they were, after the project is completed and we paid out all the bond funds. The remaining payment needs to come in from the fund now, so we will need to get those final numbers before we can. Come up with the final number that we're gonna need to screw that, close out those projects.
Yeah, and the, the two point three. Number for the, the damp twenty, we, well, shows you how long this. Makes my hair gray, the twenty twenty-four downtown revitalization, which is probably our twenty twenty-five downtown revitalization project. The last uh. Cost estimate update we have was from last September. And even just from last September through earlier this year, it's come down significantly and then. Um, another community just did a very similar downtown project and it came in fifteen percent under. The uh estimate that they had put together like close to bidding. So contractors, as far as the downtown project goes, contractors are really looking for work. So I'm pretty optimistic that uh, you know, the new cost estimate will come in even lower and then hopefully. Uh, get a good bid or a very close bid on the actual project cost. Um, so I would expect that number to drop from the two point three. And I think Boltman Mink is updating the. Estimate this week uh based on a few changes and then new quantity numbers uh on projects that they've bid more recently.
In here since uh May, you, the stormwater funds.
Yep. I think. Stormwater was.
That's in case this two, two, two sixty-two goes over, that'd be to get the flush from the stormwater.
So with like the project closeouts, that's the remaining portion after grants of the total project. Trying to remember if. There, so on the funding sources on the very last page at the bottom is the stormwater. Lines, um, which that project is not in here, so that's where we'll put together. Kind of playing off the um. Cash flow analysis that PFM does for the sewer fund. Uh, Suzie and I are gonna put together something similar for like Storm Sewer Fund to be able to have. A longer picture of, you know, what we have, what expenses come out of that, and then how does that affect? The fund balance through the years of, you know, what projects are we gonna do or when will we be able to do them, so. Like I said, there's a lot of finessing and conversation, this is just the. Like first blush of all of the requests from all of the departments and then. Like some of those larger projects. Are in capital projects, so that's where you'll see like the downtown project and then. A lot of the airport projects, because they're so large, we, instead of having them in the airport line. We bumped them to the capital projects fund.
They're still paying, I mean.
Yeah, but just to kind of hone in on larger capital projects.
It, it has to be considered a capital project.
Yes. Yep. So. Well, a short-term wait and see, so um, we'll. Set up some times and like I said, um, we'll be having conversations with department heads, so. Of the finance committee or interested parties like council could come and sit in or like I said, just. Ask department heads questions, ask Suzie or I or Liz questions.
I, I asked, this has to be done early next week.
Yep.
Because I've got to finalize this budget, I can't wait any longer, I've gotta get it published, so. Stan's gonna try to get those scheduled early.
Yep. Any other questions on capital projects?
All right, the next page would be um, the revenues and expenditures. Starting out with general fund, all right. This is before any adjustments, um, requested expenditures for general fund, uh, five million. Eight thousand five hundred and three dollars, estimated revenues, four million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and three dollars, that's a difference of eighty-three thousand one hundred dollars. We do have some options, um, we'll talk about next, how to make that up, some different expenditure and revenues. Otherwise, like local option, um. I have not, that doesn't have the capitals in there yet, so that's not final, so this, this number or this page. After we get the capitals and the, and the general fund worked out, then ultimately final. So our total expenditures. Twenty-two million, six hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and revenues, twenty-three million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. Now, this is not included waterworks, they will be included on our budget to the state, but they are not included in this first. So, looking at these, looking at the eighty-three one. Then if you look at um adjustments. First of all, we'll look at budget decreases, do you want to talk about these then?
We can tag TMO and I think if there's any specific questions, we can get some input or explanation from department heads as well.
At our department meeting, um, the department heads met and discussed um possible. Decreasing the expenditures, um, rec center, traveling conference, it may be reset by two thousand. Some of the effects of that will be, staff might not be up to date on all like parks and rec related legislation and you might have, driving the spending opportunities. Um, marketing for the rec center, they want to increase that by four thousand and they'll focus on social media and sort of paid advertising. Um, police fees, that's the one item for like interpreters. Decrease that by a thousand, the police department does have some people on staff that can interpret. Um, and then their postage, they can decrease that by about five hundred, just. Trends, looking at trends, it can be decreased by about five hundred dollars, and then their part-time wages. And five thousand in there for the part-time wages, now we have, we're fully staffed now at thirteen. The chief and officers and then three administrations down. Um, when the, the short, the part-time wages were utilized when the PD was like shorthanded, um, when they had like. The jobs parks or, you know, some previous officers who still bill in, um, when people were in the academy and different things like that or on vacations. The school pays for the additional SRO. But I don't know if that's going to continue. And I don't know. When we would know that.
I've not heard anything, as far as I know, the school's funding for the additional SRO runs out at the end of. The school year and then that part-timer that we were able to hire. Like, that is her position, so that was kind of based as a temporary position. I think there is uh somebody that will be taking. Extended period of time away on a deployment. So it's a possibility that she could uh also help fill in and, you know, we wouldn't be paying that person's. help fill in and, you know, we wouldn't be paying that person's wages. So there would be room within just the wage line item to pay for extra help that isn't budgeted. The full wages if we're not having to pay.
The full wages are just for the full time.
Correct. Yep.
Should there be a surplus there, right? We lose a full time and we retain it.
But if you don't, it wouldn't. Um and then the libraries offered to close on Sunday. Um they're right now closed on Sundays from Memorial Day to Labor Day and this would, this would make the closure year round. Um patrons would not have access to library computers, but they could still access the wifi from the outside areas of the library. Um and then mosquito spraying, eliminate that. That's ten thousand dollars. And stop the aerial spraying of mosquitoes, but they'd still can city consider um using the larvicide, the mosquito duds to put in the standing bodies of water. And then the city's newsletter, um we spend about six thousand dollars a year for the newsletter that goes into the water bill. We think it's important to update our citizens and but I think six thousand dollars is a large cost and if we had an electronic newsletter put on Facebook, social media, that would say six thousand dollars by doing that. And then also um the fire chief is a part-time position. Um they're looking at ways to become more efficient in their administration. So we could decrease fire wages by ten thousand. And then also the final one would be currently we transfer fifty percent of the branch, electric franchise fees to the tree removal fund. If we decreased that transfer by twenty thousand and use that in the general fund, um that would decrease the expenditures for ashtray removal from a hundred and ninety thousand to a hundred and seventy. So with all of those decreases, um that's around sixty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. But I want to talk about the expenditures first, then we'll move on to the revenues.
Yeah, probably touching on a few. You know, I think the recreation marketing. You know, having Chris on board, we're able to have more capacity to do some other social media marketing and make our own flyers and things like that. Um so it's really just kind of reducing the paid advertising. But trying to also, you know, with all of this will come a shift in, you know, approach to how we get information out and how we, you know, connect with our citizens and patrons outside of paid advertising. I think, you know, for Misty and talking about closing on Sundays. I think it's right now open one to four on Sundays. Uh kind of during the school year, we'll call it. Um so really three hours on Sundays. So an opportunity for savings, not only just that's, I think mostly wages of those all wages, but there could be some alleviation in some of our utilities and things like that. You know, cleaning, not having to clean up from being open on a Sunday. Also, just kind of talking with Misty and you can jump in anytime, but I think with, do you want to just talk about, you know, your types of employees and filling in on weekends and things like that?
Um sure. So basically the way that once we decided that we had to cut, um and as I pointed out, seventy-eight percent of the general fund for the library is wages. So if we're cutting anywhere, that's where it's gonna come from, at least with the library. So I did a, we've been tracking the number of people that have been coming into the library. We have a daily tracker, but we've been more consistent with doing like actual like recording those numbers at the end of each day so that we can get an actual real like how many people per hour kind of thing based on when we're open. And Sundays, it usually averages anywhere from fourteen to five to fourteen people come in per hour. February was a anomaly. That's when a lot of people had come in. So not fourteen. I said that wrong. Five to four or five per hour. Sorry. I was looking at the total number of people that came in that day. So I did it by actual, how many hours were open per day? And then how many people are we seeing per hour? And um during the month of December, Mondays were our heavy Tuesday where we were seeing twenty-two people per hour. In January, Wednesdays, where we were at twenty-three per hour, two hundred and twenty-four people a day. Um February was Tuesdays, two hundred and fifty-one per day and average of twenty-six per hour. And then so far in March, Thursdays are are the ones. So it's like two hundred and twenty-six up to yesterday. Um so that averages out to be about twenty-three people per hour that were open. So when we're looking at reducing wages, Sunday was the one that that made the most sense and would have the least effect on the services that we provide to the community based on our budget.
Good analysis.
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, yeah, the library, well, we all, all the department heads are very conscientious of how we spend the money. And so we're extremely careful with how we do it and don't I think that the biggest savings that the city gets is our time as department heads, because I can guarantee you, anybody in this room does not work forty hours a week. And it's way more than that. So does anybody have any questions about any of that? Yes, Jeremy.
Time to talk about it. Can you uh maybe hit on some of those uh federal grant things that would be going away that?
Sure. So, yeah, so forecasting in the future. One of the federal um executive orders that came through was the elimination of the Institute of Museum and Library Services. That primarily funds state libraries and with the state library, they then fund resources to all the individual city libraries. So with that executive order, which supposedly it's gonna have to, we still have funding up through September of twenty twenty-five. Without that, we will not have access to a website. We will not have access to interlibrary loan or open access. We will not have access to our um libraries sharing services. We, right now, this the state pays for a courier service, so we don't have to spend money on funding for postage when we do interlibrary loan stuff. That save us about three dollars and fifty cents per package and we do approximately five hundred a year. So that then is gonna reduce services of what people can get. There's just so much stuff that we're gonna lose. It's hard to keep track of all of it. Databases such as learning like Brainfuse, um Overdrive, which is um and Libby, which is our e-resources. So we have e-magazines, ebooks, e-audio books. We also have, so the Brainfuse actually does um school tutorials. They do um all sorts of resources for employment, resume makers. Um you can actually, as far as tutoring, you can actually contact a tutor by using Brainfuse. So I just want to, yes, thank you for that, Jeremy, because it's gonna get so obviously, when I'm trying to cut wages, we still need to operate with a website. We still need to operate with a service called HoFi, which manages all of our um meeting room keep, um all of our statistical information, all of our registration for our events. There's like six things that it does. And so that alone will cost us fifteen hundred dollars just for the HoFi. And then, like I said, with the interlibrary loan will cost us for mailing of packages, like three fifty times five hundred packages. So those are things that we don't have budgeted for in this budget, which it will happen in this particular budget. So thankfully, or not, I know it will only go so far, but we are very fortunate, unlike some other departments that have access to additional donation streams. Like the Perry Public Library Foundation, they allocate a certain percentage to us every single month. And that's what pays for all of our extras. So it pays for all of the programming materials. We actually, the city pays for all the staff. But all of the programming materials for any of our programs, any of them is done through donations. And so when we're already like at fifteen percent of our total operating is done through donations, it's gonna be really hard for us to continue the type of services that we can at the federal level with them reducing their one point two million dollars to the state, which then matches that. And there's a couple of legislation in the works right now that makes it so that we don't even get that funding if we belong to a professional organization. Like the American Library Association, the Iowa Library Association. So there's a lot going on in funding and just overall in library services. So I'm glad that you all are asking questions today, because I think it's really important for you to recognize that when you make decisions, it has a direct impact on how we can serve the community. So, which is why I mentioned that eighty-seven percent, seventy-eight percent of our funding is wages. So at the last council meeting, that has a direct impact on all of these budget cuts. So something to think about. Any other questions?
I was just gonna mention a little bit more. I'm excited for Misty. Not excited to be closed on Sundays, but excited for Misty.
Oh, yeah, because I won't be working.
I would say a lot of our part-time library staff has full-time jobs, so they mostly fill in on nights and weekends.
I know where you're going with this. So I try not to schedule them both on a Saturday and a Sunday because they have full-time jobs. So I want to ensure that they at least have one day off a week. And so if that means that I schedule myself, I schedule myself. Again, you're getting your money worth with me and all the others department heads. So so, yeah, we give a lot. And so, yeah, so the decisions you make really have an impact. Might want to relook at that franchise thing. Well, you know, it's just something that we're gonna have to get through and libraries are Let me also say that we already reach out and do all the grants that we possibly can. So, I mean, well, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's something that we need to do in order to provide the level of services that we currently do.
And I would say we are lucky, not just for the library, but all of our departments. Like the Bach Family Foundation is incredibly supportive of our departments and the Dallas County Foundation is also very supportive of a lot of our efforts and projects and, you know, supplementing some of our, our funds and resources.
Exactly. Yeah, like so Bach pays for a portion of our kids' fest every year. We receive the Dallas County um foundation for forty-six hundred dollars. That's gonna help continue to outfit our parent-child learning station. So, yeah, we look for those things. Usually in the middle of the night when we are not sleeping. So, yeah. But I also wanted to say that if you ever have any questions or want to know what's going on at the library, you know my door is open. I have this really comfy couch. And um, yeah, and I'd be happy to talk to you about it. So as would any of the department heads.
Whenever I go to Misty's office, I lay on the couch for a therapy session.
It is very therapeutic, isn't it? See, Jeremy knows. Okay, if you have any other questions, let me know. Thanks.
Another one I did want to touch on a little bit, uh probably two others. The mosquito spraying, currently we uh spray for mosquitoes once a week during mosquito season. And so for the summer of twenty twenty-five, we do have we basically buy the chemical a year ahead. So this summer's chemical has already been purchased and is awaiting application uh come mosquito season. Uh so we should be pretty good through this summer. Kind of coincidentally with this conversation, one of the capital requests was a new mosquito sprayer fogger. So the one we have that the thing that really bothers me in this job is like how old I feel of, we just bought the new mosquito sprayer. So I think Josh said the last time, last summer, I'll let him say the correct information.
Yeah, there's a lot of O-rings and stuff like that on those machines. We have a company from Illinois that we buy our chemical from. They come out calibrated. We have to have it calibrated every year so we know it's putting out the right chemical. And he just said, it's time to report. So he's just like, I asked him what he give us for it. He's gonna give us like five hundred bucks. So they're just, there's not a lot of resale. I would put it on something else if we were going to sell it and get a new one like we've done in the past, like Purple Wave or something like that. But you know, that's all your decision. So and you know, when it comes to budget cuts and stuff like that, you have to realize public works, we're funded out of the road use tax. So we really can't cut anything. The, the, there's only a few things that come out of the general fund, some engineering and insurance and mosquito spray. So that that mosquito spraying is, when you're looking for something to cut, that's really the thing. We have garbage. You know, that's a huge general fund. But it makes it's, it's, it's the supplier in the town. And those guys, you know, we used to have seven people out there. We're down to three, you know, with a part-timer. Back when we used to recycle and stuff, it's, it's bare bones out there. So mosquito spraying is just one of those things like you know, ultimately, that's your decision, you know, but.
Uh what's shelf wipe on that juice?
The juice?
Five years.
Okay, so uh we're spraying weekly. Is that a thing that, like, it does it? Would it impair us to go bi-weekly or monthly, something like that?
That was something we did discuss.
Every two weeks.
And also kind of like playing the weather, you know, last few summers have been very dry. So that, that could be something to help get us through this year and maybe a little into next year or something like that. So that's a possibility. Also depends on the life expectancy. Like I would assume the sprayer would get us through this summer and then likely not. So I know not every city sprays for mosquitoes. Um so like City of Grimes, their parks slash public works are more combined, but they go out and throw those mosquito dunks into detention ponds and things like that. So that's what we'd be looking to do, like on the Iowa Street Wetland and um likely out at the uh soccer complex and any other areas that tend to have standing water, ponding water. So I know mosquito spraying is one of the things that the City of Des Moines eliminated as well. So it's kind of one of those items. Uh the other thing is it's not a residual thing. It's only that one moment in time and, you know, drive down the street and whatever mosquitoes or bugs are out are what uh are treated. So it's really kind of a treatment one day a week versus more of a preventative approach with those standing bodies of water. And then, you know, this is also one of those things of kind of going back and really having a good strategy of communicating with our residents about, you know, treating their own ponds or things like that or um, you know, bird baths. And then also when it comes up to compliance, making sure that people don't have a bunch of tires holding water, things like that. So to me, it's one of those of, you know, it's, it's a nice service, but not necessarily like the most cost-effective, I guess, or the most you know, critical service. So I think that's
Thing, the thing with, you know, we're, we're, I guess, Perry's advantages. We do have Frog Creek running through town. We have a river. So wet years, they're bad. Dry years, they're not as bad. But those mosquito, the chemical only sprays, that's where they spray at night. Is because it gets, it gets them when they're flying. Um it kills them. Is, cause it gets them when they're flying, it kills them on contact. That's how that works. And, and how this works, I mean, when you talk about city employees like Misty was talking to, we have two people that have a mosquito license that they have to renew every year and all of a sudden. So they typically spray on Thursday nights. They alternate each week. And then they just take that Friday off. But if it's raining, they may come in on a Saturday or a Sunday to spray, but they always come in and they just do that. No one's ever complained. No one's, you know, they just, they do that because they know it's, you know, an important service and stuff like that. So it's, it's one of those things when money's tight. You know, services and stuff like that, that is, that is a service.
You know, the old, old, old machine used to go puff, 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 puff. So now the new one is so quiet that people say, you're not spraying for mosquitoes.
So that's.
Put a bell on it.
That's the thing we did get a lot of.
We're talking about putting it in the back of the police car and running the.
People actually did not believe we were spraying. And our old one was gas. It was gas.
Yeah.
The new one is all electric. So it's just a thing. You don't even hear.
Yeah.
So.
I know.
I've been called.
And people, people say you're not spraying for mosquitoes anymore. Well, yes, we are.
I think on the positive side, um, with kind of that. Shift in, you know, one person every week. Doing mosquito spraying that kind of in my mind allows that person to be. There during the day for public work stuff. So that'll help have a little bit more staff during the day and help alleviate vacations and things that happen in the summer a lot. But, um, that's kind of one of the positives, I guess, is kind of realigning that. Eight hours a week of a staff person spraying mosquitoes to, you know, be there during the day and help on. Potholes or projects or street cuts, concrete patching, stuff like that. So.
How far does that go with sprays?
It just depends on the wind a little bit, you know, I mean, it all lifts and it all, you know, does its thing. A lot of it just depends on which direction the wind is, you know, it's really hard to have no wind at all. That's the other thing and not just on, on rain, you know, weather and stuff like that. If it's too windy, they won't spread. So, um, it goes pretty far.
You know, they used to spray down the alleys.
Yeah.
And they're going on the streets now. And you don't get near as good a coverage for people. Most people hang out in their backyards.
Be honest with them, really try to stay out of alleys anymore? Just because.
They're correct.
You said it, yes.
When they were new, it was really nice. Yeah, but they are rough, really rough now.
Oh, yeah, I did. Okay. So Spence said there's no residual, right? If you were a mosquito juice salesman, would you tell me that it kills breeders or is that an actual, there is no residual?
It does not kill. It, it only kills on contact.
It's contact.
So again, if you were mosquito juice salesman, would you say it kills a lot of breeders that then we don't make as many mosquitoes? Or is this just really, we're pushing the rock up the.
You're killing the flies. You're killing everything that's fly.
Okay, which I just know because when, that's one of those.
Do make babies.
Yeah, it's one of those things where you say, but we don't have a mosquito problem. And then you say exactly, but then it goes away and. And that's a good.
I mean, a little bit, you know, big picture. As our property tax revenues go down. The services we're able to provide and take off of residents will decline as well. So, um, you know, we're gonna treat our properties, city properties. But this is a little bit one of those that homeowners, property owners may need to invest in one of those little. Propane mosquito foggers or something to take care of their properties as they're out in their backyards and things like that. But also, you know, again, it's one day a week. And, um, you know, all depends on the wind of which side of the street may or may not get some of that. So. I've not, it's been on my. Thought process of my midnight feedings to do a little bit of research on the true effectiveness of mosquito sprains. But, um, I think, you know, prevention and. The like kill on contact, I think likely balance each other out, but there will be. Uh, possibility that, you know, property owners will want to. Treat their properties more specifically as well. So.
What are the dates that you spray?
When mosquitoes come out to when mosquitoes don't come out. Typically, Joe, it just depends. You know, it's every, sometimes it's early, sometimes it's, you know, it's, it just all depends on that, you know. Usually, yeah, you know, and our big thing was, you know, like John had to go get his kids, but, you know, like spraying down to parks for like Friday fast or baseball. Or, uh, high school football games, they would go around, you know, in the parking lots and stuff like that for. Matt Hicks and stuff like that. They, they'd try to help them out and stuff like that. So, you know, but like you said, they have to be flying and, and stuff like that. So. Just depends on.
There's other, like, there's mosquito dunks, but then there's. Ranges of different foggers that we could look into for more specific events. There's also granulars that you could spread, you know, in a park or something that helped with the larva and mosquitoes. So there's other options out there to treat our public areas. So, um, but this was one of those larger line items that we really had to take a look at. And again, it really did line up with, we couldn't probably get one more season out of our current sprayer. And then, um, you know, we'll sell that or dispose of it and then, uh, focus on other methods. So again, nice thing is we have this summer all the way into next mosquito season. Whenever Joe declares it. To really put a little bit more research into other methods for mosquito control for our properties.
And I know like Misty said, you know, all the department heads, I think we've all worked really hard to go through everything, you know, so this is probably the last time we have to talk for today. But. Kudos, yeah, but kudos to Suzie, just so y'all know, I mean, she for sure, she takes this budget and she knows exactly what the hell she's doing and stuff. And Liz is, Liz has been helping too and stuff like that. So everybody buy them practice.
Yeah, wait, don't go away. I got more questions.
One last question. Uh, when you say property, that'd be the new pond out there that you're gonna spray that and then the Frog Creek you're gonna spray that for sure.
So.
Uh, Frog Creek is moving, is that?
Yeah, so we would be likely looking at doing those mosquito dunks at the Iowa Street Wetlands. And then the pond at the soccer complex, uh, for sure. Um, I think that little bit deeper research goes into, uh, other treatment options. That would, uh, be beneficial of like a granular in the grass, you know, in Perkins, Patty, Wees Park, stuff like that. So that's part of that research that we'll get into, um, in the next year. And then, you know, we again haven't looked into, you know, I've looked at just for my house, those mosquito foggers. You know, on Ace or Amazon or whatever, um, that operate off of a little propane tank and fog. So there's probably a little bit larger commercial version that we could look at as a possibility. But, um, it'll be kind of a. Ongoing research and development process, I would say, but.
And the only thing we do now is spray. We do not do any dunks. We used to, but. Quit doing it, but then we do not do any great new term. We, we just, we haven't. So I.
We hadn't quite got there, so I'll leave this to Spence's discretion, but, uh, tree removal. Yes, I have some tree removal questions for you.
Yep, and that was the next one I was gonna touch on. So, um, kind of with that previous conversation. Really around franchise fees and what that money goes into, uh, we did look at. The tree removal program, which I believe right now we're about two thirds of the way through with ash tree removal. And, uh, trimming of street and sidewalk trees. So the. Timeframe on that might just get extended a little bit. Um, again, depending on future years. We'd kind of established that increase as the, you know. Hope that we, once we're through the ash tree removal, we'd be able to continue tree trimming. And then establish a, uh, sidewalk program, whether that's, um, you know, haven't gotten there yet. That could be like a cost sharing, uh, grant or, um. Matching for sidewalk and trail projects, uh, that the city does. So we'll just like taking and looking at that franchise fee specifically. Uh, the revenue coming in and out. That was one of the options is just kind of pairing back that original timeline and plan. And, um, and taking care of them and maybe might have to be a little bit more strategic or creative. On, um, you know, focusing on the more dangerous or precarious ash trees or dangerous trees. And getting those out of what part of town is left. And then we may at some point have to reevaluate whether or not we can continue. That plan to trim all the street trees. As the ordinance is, we've not changed the ordinance. The street trees are the, um, property owner's responsibility. And.
But you can't get off to do anything because they're so busy on city trees.
He, uh, I think he kind of tries to balance. He pops in and out of city trees and city projects, but.
I mean, I'll just say that, are, is your, are you worried about, is it going to be a delay in getting the trees removed? Is that, is that what you're kind of wanting, Jeremy?
I have a three-part question. Whenever you're ready, whenever you're done, whenever you're ready.
That's fine. I would just ask that you please speak clearly into the microphone.
My apologies. Okay. So you say that we're like approximately two thirds of the way done with that. So I would assume that all of the dangerous trees got taken care of. Probably in the beginning, I know that those will crop up as we go, but probably most of the ones that were initially dangerous have been taken care of, correct?
I would say he's gotten the worst of the worst after the duration.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, because we talked about this before this started, right? And I'm, are we still, uh, honoring removal of ash trees that are not in the right of way for property owners? If they call us and okay.
No, that's not, we, we've never done that.
The only thing we've done is if they have an ash tree and they wanted to keep it. There was a tree agreement that they basically signed and said, we, the property owner is not responsible for that.
So like, like Tim, Walton Trees, they just started back up Monday. He's out cutting down ash trees right now. So, and he's leaving flyers. I gotta text him somebody today about it. If they say, nope, you're not touching my tree, that's fine, but they have to come here. And a legal document, and then because we've had it happen before, we wanted to take a tree down. And somebody said, you're not touching it. And then the minute it splits in half, they call, when are you gonna come get this? You know, so that's, this is good. She does a great job with that.
Okay, and then that document gets recorded to the property. So it's a property changes hands. That would show up on a title opinion and.
I thought there was some talk in the beginning of this that maybe we would, at the request of the homeowner, do some of those that were close to the right of way or something like that.
We couldn't afford it.
Okay, yep. Um, so then, uh, third part of the question, anybody knows, we knows I like books and trees, which is a little bit of an oxymoron, but whatever.
E-books.
Part of that, no, I don't do this. Uh, part of that is, um, tree planting as well, right? Some of that money. And so some of that could be, uh, pushed out as well. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's, that's a part of our plan. I would, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
Plan was basically, let's get all these down, right? You're dealing with the ash trees, but then you also have other trees, right? Cause there's, there's other ones, not just ash trees that need to come down. Um, I think our big thing was, let's get through these ashes because they're danger. I mean, you could say, we have the most dangerous ones down. Yeah, absolutely. One year, you know, they're getting bad and stuff like that. And I mean, I know there's a tree that, that, that's hollow inside in a part of town. That he is going to do very soon, but it's going to require a crane and it's in the right way and it's huge. And that's not an ash tree. Uh, but I think the ultimate goal is once that gets done, then we can all come back together. You know, and figure this out. And maybe that's something, Jeremy, honestly, because you're, you're, uh, interested in something. Maybe that's something like, you could help us, you know, like, like, I don't know much about trees. I know there's an evergreen and I know there's ones that have leaves. I know about Johnny Anderson seriously teased me because I didn't know what an ash tree was till like for a long time. Where we could have Johnny Anderson's and like Mike Peterson's, those guys expertise on it.
Right.
Absolutely Liz, because she's going to be the one taking the, you know, probably helping do some planting or whatever, Molly too. But that would be great. Then we get ready at that point. But yes, that is ultimate goal.
John does still have the tree farm.
Yes.
Yes, that's still.
And he's got, somebody's got to move it soon.
So if someone plants a tree, do, is that now their responsibility since they planted it back in?
Anything to get it, but there is a permit with kind of trees that at the time Walton had suggested to be good trees for the row. You just basically have to come in and tell us where you're gonna, where you're anticipating on putting the tree and the type of species that you're gonna do. I pass that on to Josh and his team and they go out and look to make sure that, A, there's enough room. And that we're not going to pop sidewalk pieces up and that B, there's no like major sewer concerns with. Or water or anything, yeah, with the lines of the ground.
And it's. It's been a few years, was it right after the Duray show, maybe? That we kind of put a short moratorium on all right of way tree planting. And then establish this permit with specified trees, but.
A lot of cities do not.
Yeah, I think that is. That is something that I have thought probably weirdly too much about is, you know. Somebody can go and buy a cute little tree and then plant it in the right of way. And as soon as that tree is planted, it's now the city's slash taxpayers' responsibility. To maintain that tree. Until it's dead, dying or is diseased and then it's on us to take care of it. So I think long-term, it's. It's, you know, one of those that is a. Positive and negative about, you know, the tree-lined streets are very beautiful. But, um, that is a very specific long-term cost. For the city to pick up once somebody plants that tree. So that, that creates a liability for us as soon as that tree is planted. That, uh, you know, the tree might cost. You know, uh, fifty to a hundred dollars, uh, to go buy. And then depending on how big it gets and what equipment's needed to take it down, it could be ten thousand dollars to remove one tree. So that's, I think. Not a conversation to like figure out the perfect scenario today. But I would say that's a policy discussion for some time of, you know, what does that look like in the future? And really, to me, it's that immediate transfer of liability that is a little. Just makes me nervous, I guess, because also if a tree branch falls from a tree and lands on a car. That typically comes to our insurance because we're responsible for the street trees. So in some scenarios, that hits our insurance. And, um, so there's a lot around trees. So.
Just the first thing that Liz said is it doesn't cost any money. And I'm sure it would be a big income line thing, but if we have people that Josh has to go out and survey and do things like that. So we're just having, we're sending people out, spending our time, seeing if people can or will, or they want to put a tree in the right of way. So we, yeah, we, why don't we charge for that? Why don't we charge it? If you want to have a tree in the right of way, why don't you have to pay a yearly fee for that? Because there's going to be maintenance, there's going to be things along the line in the future. And those are things that creative. Why don't you have to pay a yearly fee for that? Because there's gonna be maintenance, there's gonna be things along the line in the future. And those are things that creative. Things that I think that we need to.
And it's. Talk about that when that ordinance came out, but at the time, um. I think the council direction was I didn't want to deter away from trees being planted in the row by associating a cost with it. Uh, because I agree with you, a lot of times people get the permits and they'll plant the trees, kind of the same thing with like the free trees. You get a free tree and they'll plant it, but then we don't get it, it doesn't get watered and then it might not get pruned like it should. So then now you have a street tree that's. Been there for fifteen years and it's not grown in a manner that's healthy for it. And then in turn can be dangerous or cause issues for us. So I mean, it's totally something that.
And.
There's no, there's no special, special care.
Right. And that, and that increases our liability for having to pay it or insurance or whatever. Yeah, I think that's something we have to look.
And I wanna say at that time with the permit, another part of not charging was. Since it was right after the Duray Show and we lost so much of our canopy, uh, we didn't necessarily want to. Uh, have a financial hurdle or burden since. A lot of people had trees to take out or branches to get taken out, things like that. So that was, I think. Probably at that time, the consideration of not charging, but um. I know another thing some other cities do have is a tree utility. Um, very similar to our stormwater utility where there's like a tree utility charge on the water bill of. Whatever amount um and that money would go towards uh street tree maintenance. Uh. Just like our stormwater utility takes care of stormwater issues. So um. That could be a possibility. I wanna say the tree franchise or the tree utility might be a voted. Utility. Um, there is some legislation that might change that at the state right now, so. That could be more of an option in the future to implement.
I'll just say one thing, since we started having Paulton's do the tree trimming too, like we have not. At any of our equipment, garbage trucks, anything like that, which is really nice. And the school buses, I think it's helped out tremendously.
Oh, yeah.
So if I see somebody illegally plant a tree, uh, will we pick it up and drop it off at your place?
Pull it out of the yard and drop it.
Okay.
You could start a forest.
This give it, I'll just take it, yeah, just take it down to Perkins so that I can find some more trees to jump.
Good conversations that we could.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, I agree.
And.
Yeah.
Yep, and this is again, like, this was our, and I can't. Speak highly enough of our staff and um, you know, really. Every single department coming to the table and bringing what their thoughts are, making sacrifices for their departments. Um, I think a lot of each of these is kind of the. Uh, you know, triage moment to get the budget done and in for this year. Um, there's a lot of. Future conversation around how we continue or not continue uh some of our current operations. So. I think trees can be a whole work session in itself. So uh, are there any more expenditure questions? Otherwise, you wanna talk through the revenues?
Yeah, there are three um. Possibilities for revenue increase. Um, currently, um, police department, when they write a ticket. Um, they use the Iowa code, if they use the city code instead, the city would collect more. More funds, like when they do the parking tickets, like the snow parking, that's, that's a city code, not a state code. So that would um bring in an additional about twenty five hundred dollars, Jim estimated. Um, increasing the library's copy, photo and fax fees. The library's about the only location that. Really set like collects money for copies. The rec center really doesn't do much. We really don't do much of a city call. Um, so eighty seven hundred dollars if they increase um the copy, photo and fax fees. And then parks and rec, um, they've added the practice facility in the American Legion building. Um. So with those additions, they need to look at fee structures um for the rentals of those properties. So that would be about twenty three thousand two hundred. So with. With the budget decreases and then these revenue increases, that'd be about just a little under eighty five thousand. And that would balance the job.
General fund balance.
And then I think to build off some of those revenues a little bit, um. There are other things that are kind of either in the pipeline or that need consideration, but just. A uh take more time to really be. Have a quality implementation and quality study prior to July first. Um. So a few of the others that we're gonna kind of spend this next year, we're looking at. Uh, for future years. Um, one I think will be coming soon that Liz has been working on with John is. The cemetery fees uh and kind of re re looking at those based on. You know, I think part of it was just simplifying the fee structure and then we are. I think well below um market and sometimes uh may not break even depending on. The times that burials happen and how long they take and things like that, so.
The same thing as with the PD, it just hasn't been touched since two thousand and sixteen as well. So it's, it's just time, but we're gonna.
We just did that.
Solid information.
But.
Behind figuring out those fees.
And just with that too, and no matter what fee it is, just um really keeping up with. Uh, our costs, um, you know, we don't necessarily, but you know, fee increases uh aren't. A fun thing or something, but you know, that's almost ten years of. Uh, you know, increase in equipment costs, personnel costs, um, all of our. Other factors that go into that. So just kind of one of those necessities to make sure that we're uh. Essentially breaking even and making sure that we have a cushion for uh our equipment and personnel. Um, so that one's upcoming, probably more in the near term. Uh. One that we've talked about and then I think kind of got shelved a little bit based on. Uh, priorities and maybe some changes in personnel or uh the fire service franchise fees. Um. Basically, unless you opt out, pretty much every insurance policy for homeowners or commercial industrial properties. Have a line item for a fire service fee or a fire service call fee. Um, so that's just one that we need to adopt an ordinance on that and then. Uh, adopt that fee structure and kind of the process of. Uh, billing for those insurance payments. Um, and I've. In between, I've been having conversations with our local uh insurance agents, um, kind of on, you know, what. Their average coverage is and you know, for different types of properties uh and things like that. So trying to. Gather as much like local information as we can from local insurance agents. Um. And most of the ones I've talked to are like, this is absolutely something you need to do, you should be doing because. It's in the policy and if it's not billed, that's just savings for the insurance company. So. Um.
But how does that work if you've got a deductible on your property? Is it?
So.
Does it actually come out of the homeowner's pocket or does it come out of the insurance?
I think it depends, probably depends on the policy. Um, from. One conversation I had, um, they said for that fire service call, that is, that's not part of the deductible. Um, so you wouldn't, it wouldn't be an out of pocket cost. Um, but. You know, it all depends on what severity of fire there is, you know, if it's. A fully engulfed house, you're probably gonna hit your deductible anyway, so um. There's, again, there's. The fine details of that and then uh implementation. So, but that's something I think once we get through budget. We'll be working with the fire chief and uh putting together some, which we do have a draft. We just need to. Go through it again and set fees. Um, so that'll be something forthcoming, but one of those that. I know I don't feel comfortable and Suzie doesn't really feel comfortable in like. Setting a budget revenue number for that until we have more of an idea. So um, like. Sydney upstairs and with the PD, uh, we received from the county, like our calls for service for the fire department. Uh, so she's going through those to kind of. I thought.
Cause I'm waiting for the county to get some detail back.
The new one, yeah, more detailed. She'll go through those and kind of make. An estimate and kind of figure out what some, like the past two years would be and then. Uh, that'll allow us to do a little bit better forecasting on revenues, but not something that we felt comfortable. Including in the budget this year, just not knowing the timeline of implementation and what the revenues could or would be. So.
And this would only apply to homes or garages that catch fire?
Uh, it would be all property types and like uh, single or homes are like. Probably a five hundred to one thousand dollar fire service fee coverage and then commercial properties have a different coverage. Industrial properties have a different coverage. So that's where that. Information gathering from our local insurance agents to be able to kind of help hone in our fees to what. General coverages are, so.
Brush fires and things like that would not have any fee associated with them?
It, I think there's. Some do, um, which that one, like a brush fire, grass fire that somebody. Gets out of control and has to call, that would likely be an out of pocket bill. If that's a route council wants to go down, but that's still a. I think we, having just purchased a three quarter of a million dollar fire truck, know that there is a value to that fire truck. Starting up volunteers going out, uh, wear and tear on equipment. So, you know.
By the way, it's a beautiful machine.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Maybe it could be like a tier depending on the fire.
Yeah, most of them are kind of spelled out by structures or grass or things like that. So. We've got a lot of that. We just need to do another look through and bring it to council for study. Um. So those are, and then rec center memberships, uh, it's been a quite a while since. Those have been adjusted, so that's another one that we wanna make sure we. Do some good research on what fees are and then um.
Seems to be the last time we did that, we lost patrons.
And that's kind of the, um, I would say a reason we haven't done it is, I think. Took a few years to get back up to the revenue that we were at previous to increasing those fees, but. Um, there's also been changes in how memberships are managed, so that could be alleviated hopefully.
Yeah.
So.
I was gonna say, if we do something like that, I would say we need to do it graduated over years rather than try to go fifty dollars more. Or something like that.
Fifty dollars a year for five years, something like that.
Yeah, ten dollars a year.
Yeah, so.
Something like that.
Yeah, and that's again, one of those of, it was put on the table for this discussion, but again, it's. Very short timeframe to get a good understanding to turn that around, to be able to feel comfortable putting that in the budget. So I think that's kind of. The revenues and expenditure recommendations from staff, um. I think also just permit fees, fee structures, um, development fees, uh. Molly has been looking at that, so that's another one that's. Going to be coming sooner rather than later too, so um, but with that, that's kind of the. Presentation, I think that we as staff, department heads uh came up with to. Put the general fund in the black this year.
Since I need to complete the budget, I would like to have. I don't need action, but I would like council's blessing to go ahead and prepare like it like written. Yes, so I can present it at the council meeting on the seventh.
I make a motion that we. Pass it as presented.
Prepared. Forward with preparing as presented.
Yes. I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Walling?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Hey, any other discussion? Okay, really like to thank Suzie, Liz, Sven and all the department heads for all the work they've done, put into this. It's, I'm sure, a huge, huge task and um. It's a big task just looking at it, so could imagine preparing it, but thank you so much. Um.
About two months ago.
Okay, so.
So.
With that, we will adjourn.